This is a work session of the council. It's not a former formal council meeting. But the specific purpose, Mark, is frankly to hear from you. And I'll give you just a couple of minutes of background and then you can, it's over to you. Obviously, we're spending a lot of time trying to think through how we want to approach this potential very sizable new development on the, what used to be the four age property and now is going to become a retirement community with four to 500 residents. And, and one of the big issues to our, the residents who are nearby, but to the town as a whole is stormwater management. And we have a notion of what our own ordinance is, which is really focused very much on how to, how to contain on property, potential increase that could arise from, from expansion on, on single family homes lots. But we really don't have any familiarity with the county rules, which we know have to be abided by, by, by the course of developers. And so we would really be grateful if you could walk us through what we can expect or what are the county requirements in stormwater management for this property? And let us ask some questions. It's really just our chance to kind of go up the curve and understand better than we have before. How the county approaches this, since obviously you guys will carry a whole lot of weight here in terms of the, the requirements for stormwater management on this property.
Okay. Well, thank you for asking me out tonight to talk about this stuff. I love talking about stormwater. So you may have to shut me up after a while. But I'm happy to go through the, the basics of what we do. You may or may not know, we do our reviews as a delegated review authority for Maryland Department of the Environment. First and foremost, federal government requires the states to have stormwater programs for environmental mitigation. And the state's program includes delegation of authority to counties and other jurisdictions, other entities to perform reviews on their behalf. That said, the local jurisdictions can have stricter policies and stricter requirements than the standards set forth by M D E. We can't be more lenient. And in fact, Montgomery County does have some standards that are more strict than the state standard. For a project like this, or any project coming through, this one in particular, we're going to look to see, first of all, if this is new development or redevelopment. And there's a state, there's a, there's a state definition for that. This would, depending on the existing imperviousness, could be either one. I can't tell for sure. Haven't seen any comps. First of all, none of this has been submitted to me. I haven't seen any of this across my desk yet, even, even. Just as a, as a heads up, nothing's come into us yet. Have not seen it. It will be going through the full park and planning process, as you know, and you'll be involved in that, I'm sure. Our purpose here, as defined by law, is for environmental mitigation and to address potentials for what's called local flooding. That's flooded streets in those areas that involve areas of the community, not individual lot to lot runoff necessarily. So one of the first things we look at when we get a project like this is where does the water go now? In this particular case, I know there are a couple of different county storm drain systems that this runoff will be entering into. And of course, on the, the state road Connecticut, there's a state system. I don't see any existing storm drain piping on that section of Connecticut. But be that as it may, one of the things we require when we go through our conceptual stage of review for this project is to have the engineer show us what the full build out is going to be. And we require them to work with the agency that is in charge of the receiving storm drain system to, to have, to obtain an approved conveyance study to show whether or not the existing, the, the proposed condition will be adequately conveyed through that system. So we'll have them go to DOT and do a drainage study to see if that system is capable of handling the flow they're going to be sending to it. And they'll have to go separately to the state for the same thing. And you guys can stop me at any time and ask any questions. Just put a hand up or, or just, you know, say, hey, Mark, I got it. I got a question for you.
Well, I'll start right now, Mark, just to make sure I have this interactive. So what we understand is there is one series of outflow pipes on this property that comes down to the south, southwest corner. We're not aware of any other stormwater drainage pipes, but I could be mistaken on that. Is there another set or is that, is that the only set that really is there?
Yeah, there's one, sorry, I started off, there's one that discharges onto Meadow and there's a second pipe that connects to the county storm drain system on Thorn Apple Street.
Yeah.
Oh, there is one on Thorn Apple too. Okay. And are they the same size or they was?
Let's see, I'm looking it up.
Yeah, that I don't know offhand.
Do you guys, if you don't have a access to this, I'll send you a link to DOT's, what's called Stormnet, which lists the county storm drains, like a G I S layer. Now, some of the information isn't, isn't accurate because it hasn't all been field checked, but I can certainly, if you want to send me an email, I'll send you a link to this and it shows state and county storm drains as mapped in the DOT system. So you can have that as background information and you can look up attributes. It says the Thorn Apple is a 15 inch H D P E pipe at the initial stage of it and where it ties in at the, at the connection to the other road there. It looks like it's my computer's thinking about it here. It goes up to an 18 inch R C P at that point.
So 15 inch on Thorn Apple, 18 inches onto Meadow. And this conveyance study, is this to determine whether more, how much flow would come out of each of these two pipes and whether that would be more or less than what currently flows?
If the conveyance study shows that the development that they're going to create cannot be adequately conveyed in the existing storm drain system, then they have two options. They can look at, look into upsizing the existing storm drain system to provide adequate conveyance. Or they can try to design what's called detention, 10 year detention onsite to, to meter that water off so that it doesn't exceed the capacity of that receiving storm drain system.
Okay, we call that detention?
Yeah, detention, underground detention typically is what we look at. Think of a bathtub, you fill it up with water, you pull the plug. It takes a while for the water to go out because the, the drain is only a smaller size. So they capture the runoff into some underground pipes. They, they let that go out into the system through a metered orifice that is sized to reduce the flow to a certain flow. So they don't overtax the receiving system. So it slows it down. So the pipes in the, in the road can handle it. To avoid flooding the intercept like that.
What, what about requiring more, more treatment for the water onsite and keeping it from even becoming runoff at all?
Well, that's part of it. I haven't gotten to that yet, but that's, that's another part of our compliance, compliance standard. Now, DOT, when they look at conveyance through the, the public storm drain system, they try to look at it in a conservative way. And we may do some E S D practices and things like that, that promote groundwater recharge as we're required to do and, and reduce some of those flows onsite. But remember, we're typically looking at portions of a one year storm event, a statistical one year storm event for environmental compliance to E S D standards. The, the storm drain system in the street is typically sized for a 10 year storm event. So trying to attenuate that onsite.
Well, what are E S T standards?
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, the, the water quality and quantity that we typically talk about is, is stormwater management onsite, putting in rain gardens and microbioretention practices and those kinds of things on the subject property. They have to be done to a standard called environmentally sensitive design, E S D. That's the state standard since the Stormwater Act of 2007 was put into place. I'll just back up a little bit on that. In 2007, the state instituted the E S D standard formally with the 2007 Stormwater Act and the county was required to incorporate that act into our, into our code. And we did so in July of 2010. The state had to approve our code changes and eventually they did. We took us a couple of tries, but we got it done.
Let me go back to, let me go back to conveyance again before we get to the, so in terms of DOT, we guess oversees our stormwater system. Were they looking at conveyance just at that local section of pipe? Or are they looking at all the way downstream? Because eventually, and this is where we're most concerned, the water all comes in, into the two large conduits under Zimmerman Park that are really ducting Coquitlambe Run. But the water that flows down Thorn Apple and, and Meadow, I guess eventually gets down to that point, right?
Eventually it does, yes.
So, so if they, if they said they wanted to enlarge the system, would they be permitted to enlarge just the duct work on Thorn Apple? Or would they be forced to actually enlarge it all the way downstream?
The, the policy that DOT and the right away section of D P S follow is that if the system has to be upsized, it's to three manhole sections down.
So not very far.
Depends on what those sections are between the manholes. But yeah, it's three manhole sections down for them to upsize that, that system. Are you guys, just, just out of curiosity, are you experiencing issues up in this area right now with inadequate drainage from the road surface during heavier storm events?
Dave, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a few storm events recently where, you know, the system has become overcapacity and we've had manhole lids that have popped and, you know, you have let's sit back up and so water runs down the street. Doesn't happen terribly often, but that seems like it's happening more frequently now than in previous years.
Yeah, it is indeed. And actually there's, there's lots of different places. D E P at the county and also I'm working on a task force with M D E right now to look at resiliency and maybe changing some of the ways that M D E makes requirements throughout the state for, for sizing storm drain systems. They typically don't get involved in the storm drain sizing criteria, but they're thinking of stepping into that because those rain events are becoming shorter and more intense. And that they can't overtax a system that was sized for an older storm regime.
All right. And the other alternative that satisfies the county requirement is to basically having, have some level of detention. So you're still having ultimately the same amount of water running off the property, but you are stretching out the period of time over which it runs off. So that you, it just basically smooths out the intensity of the flow and eventually the water can be conveyed. Is that the sense of it?
Yeah, we do look at it from two different standpoints. We look at it from the environmental, environmental mitigation standpoint, which is the E S D. And we look at it from the, the larger storm event conveyance. I started with the larger storm event stuff into the storm drain system. I know that providing control onsite, I'll get to that now, I guess. The, the E S D standards and those water quality and quantity control standards that we typically think about as being stormwater management, they do take a little bit of water off of the larger storm events. But we try to be conservative to some degree because a lot of those smaller E S D type practices, even though there are any easements and they're required to be inspected by D E P and they're required to be maintained either by D E P or by the landowner, they, they can fail over time. And if we're talking about public safety in terms of conveyance of flows down the public right of way, we usually just ignore the E S D treatments when we look at the 10 year sizing, just to be more, more conservative in our designs. But what we'll look at on this first is the conveyance. Second, we're going to look at what they're going to do. And we're going to work up their, their storage volume for treatment as required by M D E. Like I said, that's based, based on a statistical one year storm event, which is 2.7 inches in 24 hours. That's the environmental compliance standard that M D has us looking at. So we will have them analyze the site, determine what their treatment volume is going to be. Then they'll have to start looking at types of treatment that will give them the credits they need to comply with those requirements. So we'll look at, a green roof is one of the first things we have to have them consider. They don't have to use green roof, but they have to consider it first. If they can't meet their requirements through other methods, then we're going to go back and look very seriously at green roof again and implement that if we need to, but they have to at least consider it at the, at the get go. This looks like a project that would be very conducive to the use of green roof. So I would suspect that we're going to see that as something that they're going to, to promote. I also like to see that this is up on a high spot. We're at a, we're at a a high spot here with this piece of property. I suspect, I don't know, I suspect we're going to have pretty good infiltration rates because of the location in the landscape. We will have them do a geotechnical analysis as part of our conceptual study. And they will have to do infiltration testing. If we have good infiltration rates, then we put a priority on practices that provide infiltration and groundwater recharge. Recharge is important because that's what keeps the receiving stream systems alive. It lets that water go through the ground slowly and continually feed that base flow that makes the stream flow constantly. You can see areas of the county where a lot of paving was done in days before there was stormwater. And the stream systems have pretty much died out. They flow when it rains and they dry up when it doesn't rain. It's called a flashy system. And that's not a healthy system. And that's because a lot of the groundwater recharge has been starved from that watershed that that needs. So we try to incorporate groundwater recharge, which, which means getting water into the ground and allowing it to soak in. So we don't pipe it out, put it into an area that it can't go anywhere but down. There's filtration of the flow to remove pollutants prior to going into the infiltration. So we'll have filtration material, planting material, those kinds of things that the water will percolate through. There will be an underdrain there, but below the underdrain is usually a dead space where water has to sit and soak in. There's lots of other practices we look at for trying to get the groundwater recharge. They'll look at all of those kinds of things. Pervious paving is one of the things we have them look at initially as well. A whole series of, of, of treatment practices. And they will have to show that they can do what's called the maximum extent practicable in trying to provide the control that they need through those E S D type practices. If for some reason they can't obtain full compliance through E S D practices, then they have to look at what's called structural treatment practices. And those are some, some traditional water quality devices, filter cartridges, sand filters, those kinds of things. M D E has some specifications on how that's to be looked at. And they have to try to get the rest of their treatment requirement met through those practices if they can. If all else fails and we just can't do it, there's something that we can't get full compliance. The law does allow us to issue a partial waiver of the stormwater treatment requirements. If we need to, we wouldn't do that if there wasn't adequate conveyance. That's when the conveyance is going to come in in terms of what we look at for, for onsite treatment.
I mean, okay, I'm, I'm, uh, this has been really helpful, but this is.
There's a lot of stuff and I keep talking.
I mean, let me see if I can back up and by all means, I want my colleagues to chime in too. First of all, I think what I'm taking on board here is that there are two separate county agencies looking at this. The Department of Transportation, which has a stormwater management systems is looking at conveyance. It wants to know whether the conveyance is, there's going to be pressured to over, that's going to be overloaded. And there are a couple of things they look at in terms of that. Then the M D E, that's the, what's the Department of Environment or what, what's that?
That's the Maryland Department of the Environment. That's the one that authorizes me to do my reviews, right?
Right. And, and then they, and they delegate that to a county agency also.
They delegate that, they delegate that to D P S for, for, for Montgomery County. There are.
Department of, D P S is Department of.
Department of Permitting Services. That's, yeah, that's what I work, work for.
Got it. Okay. And so your focus, their focus is not on conveyance, but actually on treatment of the water onsite.
Our, ours is both, is primarily treatment onsite, but we also look at conveyance because if there isn't adequate conveyance, we are then required to make sure they do something to provide adequate conveyance.
Okay. And so then, then no pun intended, but it flows back to the same way that, that Department of Transportation looks at it.
We rely on the Department of Transportation to tell us if the system adequately conveys the proposed development. We don't do that study. If they say, yeah, everything's good. It's, it'll flow like crazy. We don't have any problems with capacity. Then we don't address that, that, that conveyance issue for the larger 10 year storm event.
Okay. And, and you're looking, the, the, the maximum extent practicable, that's the standard.
Yes.
And that is to, and you're looking at a 10 year storm event for that purpose?
One year storm event.
One year. And how much water again is that?
2.7 inches in 24 hours.
2.7 inches in 24 hours. Okay. And, and so the question is, when they, and this is what I think we as laypeople would like to understand is that if they're needing to comply with the M D E requirements for a maximum extent to the, you know, maximum extent practicable. How, as a, what is likely to be the result in terms of the amount of water, stormwater that would actually ultimately have to be conveyed into, into the stormwater system and is that amount likely to be less or even materially less than currently is conveyed off the property?
I would say it's more likely to be materially more than is currently conveyed from the property. There is, we, we don't really do a lot of studies on the amount of attenuation that's provided by E S D practices for the 10 year storm event. Some of the 10 year does go through those practices and it does reduce the 10 year to some degree, but we don't credit that. Like I said, we try to be more conservative. We look at a worst case scenario and say, there is no E S D. What's your flow into that system? So there is some effect on the larger storm events being reduced by E S D practices. But we don't formally credit them with that. And so we don't really calculate that. But so in that case, you know, in that sense, we would have to say there probably would be an increase of flow from the developed property if they're increasing the imperviousness out there. And I'm sure they will be. I hope that's, you know, muddy enough for you. Sorry about that.
Let me pause there. I think that's, does anyone else have any questions about this that we're going over? Cause obviously this is a very important point for us.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Please go ahead, Joy.
So, um, so if we assume then that the, you know, the developed property will convey more water. I mean, you know, absent all the regulations and stuff you need to do, than the current property does. The, so you're going to look at then the, the conveyance or the state, I guess, does their conveyance study? And is there sort of like a before and after, like the, are they measuring how much water is coming off the site now? And then do they have some sort of a model or whatever that determines how much might come off once the development is completed?
No, they're going to look at the piping that's out there. We just talked a minute ago about a 15 inch pipe going to an 18 inch pipe in size. They're going to look at the area that drains to that pipe system. Is it, is it, let's say it's five acres. And let's say right now it's 50% impervious. And it can handle that flow because that's going to generate a certain amount of runoff in a 10 year storm event. By the way, a 10 year storm event is 4.8 inches in 24 hours. So that, so they know how much runoff is generated in a 10 year storm event from that area, given a certain amount of imperviousness. So if they increase the imperviousness, they're going to look at that, that, that overall amount of water that's going into that system and say, okay, now, now that it's not just X amount, it's X plus Y. Do we have enough room in that pipe system to, to move that water without it being backed up into the street and causing traffic issues and flooding issues? There's computations that they use based on roughness coefficients and all that kind of stuff to size those pipes at, at certain slopes for gravity to determine how much water can go through that pipe in a given event. And they will do those studies. DOT will do the studies for their system. And if there are, if there's runoff that's entering the state highway administration storm drain system, they'll have to do those studies as well. And those studies will have to be approved before we approve our stormwater concept. I should probably mention too, that the concept is something that has to be done before it can be, before the project can go before the planning board. A concept approval doesn't let them do anything. It's literally a picture. Hey, here's what we want to do. Will this work? And we say, given the picture, this looks like it will or won't work. Then they can go to the planning board, the planning board to make their findings. And after that, we would then look at actual design plans that would actually result in permits. Concepts don't give them the ability to do anything.
Okay. So if, if I may continue, I only have a couple more questions.
Please go ahead.
So the, so the, the state highway administration will, will either determine that, given what the new development portends using their formula is the current storm drain system in the streets can either take all that additional water or it can't. And then what happens if they determine that it can't? Then is that where you come in?
Yes, one of two things will happen. They'll either have to upsize the system instead of a 15 inch pipe, do a 24 inch pipe, whatever that, you know, whatever it happens to be. Or, and in most cases, this is what they do, or they will put controls onsite as part of their development to, to catch that increased flow, capture it in a pipe system onsite and meter it out slowly into the system. So it doesn't overtax the system in the storm event.
I see. And so then that, that then is part of their, so you said there's a, a concept, which is what gets approved. But then when they're actually working on plans and by the time they get to you in terms of permits, that, that you, that you see is going to have new pipes, it's going to have this E S D stuff, a combination of both, whatever it is to ensure that there's not too much water going to the big main system.
Correct.
Okay. So then in that case, there is no, the, the current process does not allow for checking on whether any of, you know, if they change any of the grading or anything of the site, whether any of that water is going to affect abutting properties.
We look at that as part of the concept as well. They, we will send out downstream notifications to adjacent properties or the engineers will. That is for us to look to see if anybody in the area has or is aware of existing drainage or flooding problems or erosion problems that we should be aware of during our review. Say we get five letters and say, hey, man, groundwater is just killing us here. We got our, our basements are flooding all the time. We may want to second, give second thoughts to encouraging a lot of groundwater recharge in that case. If we may exacerbate a groundwater issue, or they say, hey, there's a gully back here that's just, just tearing itself to pieces. And don't increase the runoff to this area. We'll, we'll have that background information. So that will be noticed. And we do take that into consideration. And anytime we get information from a downstream property owner, we forward that to the design engineer because ultimately they would be responsible for any kind of property damage that may occur. So they need to know that.
I see. Thank you.
There's a very interesting statement you made there, which is that recharging, which offhand I would have thought is a great thing because that keeps the water on place can actually exacerbate the concerns of flooding in, in the basement of near neighbors.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a delicate balance out there. We think if we just stick it all under the carpet, it goes away, but it doesn't go away. It goes somewhere else. That's one of the things we, we forget sometimes is we can't make water disappear. We're only making it go to a different location, the way we think it's going to go safely. There was a lot of discussion when E S D was first being promoted that we're encouraging too much groundwater. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to encourage groundwater plumes. We're going to see people having seepage issues who didn't have them before. I don't think a lot of that has come to fruition. But we have seen some studies to show that too much groundwater can actually be detrimental to the health of the stream system. Because it's not used to having that much water given to it. So those, those, that can cause increases in flows as well. In the Clarksburg area, there were some early studies that showed that some of the recharge that was being provided was actually doing some harm to the stream system. Cause it was just too much.
But let's, let's assume for the moment there's going to be an increase in impervious surface. So if we tried to have some kind of system that brought about an amount of, of recharge, which was at least equal to what currently takes place, we should be okay with that, right? I mean, that's status quo. We're not, I'm, we have to find out, but we've talked to a lot of the near neighbors and flooding in their basements is not something that at least I have any recollection of our hearing about. flooding in their basements is not something that at least I have any recollection of our hearing about, uh, that I don't think that's a problem for them. I think there's a more, a bigger concern and I want to come back. This is really what gets to me. Is that the issue of, of conveyance and only going three manhole covers down the street. So, you know, this, this would now, of course, they could also as well, hi Joel, thanks for joining. They could also put in the detention system you're talking about. But what we're facing is a concern that we already have times when our existing stormwater management pipes are not adequate. So if they say, well, gee, we've met our obligation, we've enlarged the pipe for three manhole covers. So what? Do we now find there's still a whole lot more water that is trying to get through the system further downstream than previously had been coming off the site? And therefore that puts greater pressure on potential flooding down, downstream generally. And indeed, that's, that's what we saw here in a way that, I don't know, it was only about four or five months ago.
Parking is where we're going to go.
We've, we have never, we have never seen a flood.
We just had to make sure that it stays open until.
I'm sorry, Irene, were you?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, the, uh, so I find it offhand very concerning that they could meet the requirement only for three manhole covers. And then leave the town at risk for the additional flow all the way downstream. I suppose if they put in the detention system as long, that holds it long enough, maybe that is in some way that truly mitigated. But I, I guess what frankly, we are hoping, and, and we say this partly because this is what one of the developers, I will say somewhat blithely stated during a walk in R that we had a couple of weeks ago. Was that he thought the amount of, 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 uh, stormwater runoff off the property into the pipes would actually decrease because of the stringent, uh, measures that would be required. And I guess he was referring to the E S D uh, uh, requirements. And so he was thinking, hey, stormwater is not going to be a problem here. And they have no plans, he said, to increase the size of the pipes. Certainly not the one leading down to Meadow. I can't speak to the one Thorn Apple. But they, they, the, the collection system will change, but he said that they have no plans to increase the size of the pipe itself in down in, uh, to Meadow, which, you know, with an indication, they don't see themselves as generating more. Now, maybe, maybe they thought in terms of detention, but I.
No, I doubt it. I, I, I think they're thinking that their E S D practices are going to, there is no stormwater management out there now. Granted, there's nothing out there treating what's off that impervious area right now. Anything that we put on, given the same impervious area would be an improvement to the runoff situation. I agree. If they're going to expand that imperviousness a great deal, and I think they will as much as they can, that in itself increases runoff. But then they're going to put controls in that are going to try to control that to some degree and reduce it. There may be a slight decrease. But we're talking about the one year storm event. We're talking about E S D practices. By the time we get to a five or 10 year storm, those things are full. And there could still be an increase in the 10 year runoff because that's not being controlled by those smaller practices. So that's why we have to look at that conveyance standard. Now, don't forget that let's take, take the D O T, uh, system, for example. I don't speak for D O T and I'm, I'm going to, not going to try to, but they talk about three manholes down for the applicant to be responsible for upgrading. D O T still has a responsibility to maintain that entire system and keep it adequately sized. So D O T does still do upgrade systems throughout the county when they're necessary and they do keep track of that as best they can. Now that's a tremendous amount of funding and a tremendous amount of work, but it's not that three manholes, forget about everything's good. It's still on the books of D O T to make sure that that system continues to function adequately. Now, when we get one of those downpours that we get six inches in three or four hours, it will not function adequately because we don't have a system anywhere in the county or probably the state that's handle, that's, that's sized to handle that amount of flow. They're usually sized to handle the 10 year storm event. Which is roughly five inches at 24 hours. It's, it's varied. Uh, but yeah, it's, it, that's what they're sized to handle. So it's not like we're just letting them off the hook if they do three. We are letting them off the hook, but if the system is severely undersized or something, D O T needs to look at that and maybe get a C I P project out there to do some upgrades regardless whether or not this project redevelops.
Is there anyone who can, let's say there's a raft of, 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 um, retention measures that are put in, okay? Can one study get, have an accurate model that can say, okay, with these retention measures, uh, recharging measures, if I should use the term you were using. Uh, we, we therefore believe that this will be the amount conveyed in a one year and a 10 year storm. Can that be projected? You said conservatively, you just pretend it doesn't make any difference, but I'm saying as a practice, can you actually model it? So you can in fact have a pretty good indication of what the net effect of those uh, uh, recharging measures will be.
It can, it can be done. Certainly. I had a recent project that we did that. Uh, it was not as extensive as this project. There was only a couple of what we call planter boxes, microbiota, tition planter boxes that did receive the 10 year storm event from a roof area. We were able to show that in a 10 year storm, because of the underdrain pipe size on these boxes, the 10 year storm was actually stored and reduced. We were talking about fractions of a, of a cubic foot per second though, not large storm attenuation, but they, they do have an effect and it is possible to model that.
And I'm thinking about the fact this, this whole facility is going to really have a huge garage underneath it. Okay. So there's going to be a lot of impervious surface. Is there a way when you're designing it to duck the water so that actually it's drains into the area under the garage? In other words, even though the garage floor is impervious, you're able to actually gain access to the land area under the garage to help in the recharging and that doesn't become dry space, so to speak, but that actually can be absorb some of the water that would be coming down the sides of the buildings and the lawns and stuff.
We haven't done a lot of that. It's very difficult to design something like that to work. Once you get deep into the ground, gravity stops working and you have to use pumps to move water back out. If you are trying to treat it and release it, pumping is a very difficult thing for Department of Environmental Protection to try to, to keep track of and, and to maintain and to, and to, uh, 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 to inspect, you know, what goes out in the storm event, your pumps, right? Uh, we don't want to flood buildings, so we don't do a lot of that. Now, if they're proposing underground parking, that underground area is required to drain to W S S C. It cannot go into the storm drain system. It isn't atmospheric runoff, which is what we're sizing our structure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I wasn't clear, Mark. I wasn't referring to water inside the garage. I was referring to water that comes from the roofs and, and, you know, basically under the purpose service, but that when you want to then find a way to recharge it, is there a way to duck it underneath the garage? So that you take advantage of that area that's under the garage as part of the, the soil that can be, water can get to and drain down through.
We typically do try to take the roof runoff into an area that can recharge. We don't like to put it into the foundation of the building. Cause that can have an effect on the structure of the building. But we'll have a green roof, which will slow down the water to some degree and filter it. And then we'll have the, the downspouts drain to some other practice, a vegetated practice, let's say a landscaped area that will capture more of that flow and allow it to soak into the ground. That's one of the main things that we look at doing.
Okay. Joel, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, I was late. Um, and, and, uh, very much appreciate this expertise. Uh, I, I wanted to ask a little bit about the soil as well and, um, I mean, I, I don't know, but my guess is that the soil currently is awful around the four H center that there's toxins in there. There's stuff buried underneath. Who knows what, what situation we've got. And, uh, my belief, my assumption is that of course those responsible for all of it, if we're mitigating it all, we'll find out. If it's worse than they expected, maybe they'll look for some help, um, to, to mitigate it, but it's got to be mitigated, right? So, uh, once it's mitigated, uh, like are there, uh, soils, are, are there, um, you know, natural replacements that uh, that make a better, uh, stormwater management? And we, you know, the runoff is not just runoff of, of, oh, there's a lot of water, but it's also, oh, there's a lot of toxic water. And it's flowing into our drainage and it's flowing into the Chesapeake and all of that. So just hear your thoughts on this as well.
Yeah. Do you suspect that there are contaminated soils on the site for some reason? I don't know.
I, uh, this is just me totally thumb, you know, just guessing, right? But I mean, it's light, it's 130 years old and who knows what kind of paints were used, what kind of pipes are buried, what kinds of, you know, external, um, flow there was over the years from God knows what. So, but I don't know.
So one of the first thing, and you probably weren't here, we talked about this. One of the first things we have them do when they submit their conceptual study to us is to submit a geotechnical analysis that has soil borings throughout the site. And includes, uh, perk testing and those kinds of things. And as part of that soil boring, they're looking at, they're looking for contaminants. If there are contaminated soils evident, then that gets reported if they have to be mitigated. Let's say worst case scenario, we find some kind of horrible stuff. They got to take a bunch of soil out and, and take it to some remediation location and bring soil back in. We would not be able to try to encourage groundwater recharge in that replacement soil. Replacement soils aren't as compacted as in situ soils. They have a tendency to compact through time if you put water into them. So what happens is what you have on the surface, your, your parking, your building foundations tend to sink and it tends to cause problems. So if we have significant amounts of what we call fill, which is material that's brought in, we say, look, it's probably not likely that we're going to get much groundwater recharge here because it's just not feasible to do that. Uh, but we would look to see first to see what kind of soils they have. I said earlier, I, I like the fact that this, this project is on a little bit of a rise, a little bit of a mound. Usually that's some of the better soils, unless we have shallow bedrock. What some of the better soils in terms of getting perkability into the ground to allow those things to, to, to percolate. When we get into the lower areas, we tend to see a lot of clays and those kinds of things. And those clays are soils that we just can't, can't perk into. We're looking for gravels and sand and those kind of things, something friable that allows that water to go into the substrate. So we'll look at that stuff as part of that original, uh, original concept. One of the main things we're looking to do is filter pollutants before they leave the site. That's one of our major charges. You know, most, we, we, some people think, oh, we only do water quality. Well, we don't do water quantity. Well, actually we do them both at the same time now. Uh, the first drop of water that hits the ground that we treat is, is really treated to reduce some of the runoff effects on the receiving storm drain system, storm system or stream system in terms of the quantity of runoff, but it's also trying to reduce those pollutants. The soluble pollutants and the heavy metals and whatever else comes off the development, capture those onsite that they're mitigated there. They're not taken offsite into the stream system and ultimately to the bay. You're exactly right.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, please go ahead, Rich.
Well, I want to go back to something that you started on. Um, my assumption on their underground garage was that, they're going to probably have sumps in there to get rid of the, whatever water seeps in. And I was, I was thinking, where would that go? Where, would that be added to what you guys study? But it sounds like you don't care about that because it's going to go into W S S C, not into the storm drain.
If there is, if there was a shallow groundwater out there that's going to have an impact on the building and it needs to be drained away, that would probably be taken into the storm drain system somehow because W S S C is very, uh, careful about having what they call influent water come into their system. They're managing their system all the time. The water that comes out of the tap needs to go into their sewer system and that cycle needs to be, be managed. They don't like rainwater. They don't like groundwater. They don't want that stuff. When groundwater gets into their pipes, that's something they try to eliminate. Uh, so if there is a groundwater issue and if they do need to do some kind of, uh, uh, foundation drains, those drains will be put in like French drains around a basement. And then we'll be taken to a storm drain system and it will be conveyed through the system. The system has to be able to handle that. That's how that will go. But anything else in the parking garage, if they go in and they wash the parking down once a year or something to remove oils and those kinds of things, that does not go into the stormwater management system that has to be piped to W S S C because it comes out of their system and it goes back into their system for treatment.
Yeah, that, I, I guess that's, that answers it somewhat. So, and, and you guys would, you guys would consider those flows coming into those drainage systems for the building in your calculations?
D O T would, if they're looking at taking that into their system, they would have to account for that in the sizing of their storm drain system. I mean, let's say, basically if there was a lot of water and it was constantly filling up the storm drain, there wouldn't be room in there for a storm event when it happens because it's already got groundwater going through there. That's very unusual. I don't see that happening much at all, especially in a site located like this one where it's up on a rise. I wouldn't expect, I'm always surprised. It's like voodoo science when you look into the ground like that. I, I, I wouldn't suspect that we're going to see high groundwater here unless it's perched above some sort of uh, hard pan or something like that. I just can't imagine it.
Yeah, there is a very active sump pump under the current four H that currently is discharging on a pretty regular basis down to Connecticut Avenue. Um, we've had complaints about the sidewalk freezing in front of the existing building and
Ah, good to know.
It's Connecticut Avenue. It actually runs all the way down to Virgilia Street, I think before it enters the town, but there is a pretty constant stream of water that it currently exists there. So that is something.
Maybe there will be a groundwater problem then. Yeah, we'll find that out when we do the geotechnical analysis for sure.
Thank you.
Does the county allow retention or detention ponds on a project like this?
We can do ponds on a project like this, um, if they are necessary. They're really expensive and they take up a lot of, of real estate, obviously. We don't do them for E S D and, and that one year storm event. Uh, but we do, we do allow them for the larger storm events. If we need to do detention ponds, we can do that. Uh, we'd, it would be a dry pond that would only fill up when it rains and then we would meter that water out. That's, that's a possibility. Don't see too many ponds constructed much anymore.
Yeah, there's not much space here. Hey, one of the things that I'm taking on board, which is kind of confounding is that you've got for the standard of E S D, you use a one year event, but for the conveyance, you use a 10 year event. Uh, so when you're trying to put in a bunch of different measures for, to, for E S D, you're not, you're not required to reach to that higher standard of a 10 year event. You're, you're satisfied with just the one year event. You know, so I, I, I suppose if, just to go to one end, one bookend, supposing you put in enough measures that essentially in a one year event, there was, all the water was recharged. You know, there basically no water went down the pipes to the, suppose if that were the case, then you obviously would have, that would comprise a very substantial mitigant to the 10 year event, which is largely more or less double the one year event, right? That's in terms of flows. Uh, so you would know that made a big difference. But your observation from before was that by and large, these E S D um, measures, you do not think make that much of a reduction difference in reducing the need for conveyance of water off the site.
I guess what I should have to say is we don't count on them to do that and we don't credit them with doing that. We know they have some effect. But it's variable. How, how do you measure the actual effect of water that goes into a, uh, a planting area that has a potential for one foot of freestanding water, four feet of planting medium that has variable mixes that can be placed uh, under drain stones and under drain pipes. And then over time compaction and filtration and, and, and failure slowly of that structure. That structure's ability to control that runoff is going to change through time. And it's not going to be the same from structure to structure, from site to site, because there's variability in the materials. So we know it has an effect. We do know that, but we don't credit it because we just can't objectively measure it on a regular basis and make sure that it's maintained that way. That's why we rely on underground pipes for detention, because we can look at the pipe and see if it's broken. We can see if it's clean. We can see if it's clogged and we can fix it. And it always acts the same way because it's just a void space with a small orifice at the end to let the water go out.
So if I understand this properly, you So if I understand this properly, you might, we might end up with a degree to which says, okay, here is our ESD program to put into the maximum extent practicable and there are a whole bunch of measures that do that at green roofs and other things. Uh, and that, let's hope, does make some material difference. But meanwhile, for the purposes of conveyance, you're going to look at a ten-year event. You're going to assume that that ESD stuff isn't mounting to a hill of beans. Because, among other things, even if it mounts to a lot initially, over some number of years, the systems will degrade. So the backup protection is to make sure that the conveyance is focused on. It may be initially that there is um, sort of belts and suspenders, if you will, that, that, that perhaps they're putting in bigger detention, more detention than might be necessary because initially ESD works well and is actually reducing the flow in itself a fair amount. But for the purposes of your calculations, you don't assume that it helps. And therefore you insist on that, as you put it, greater measure of conservativeness in the design of the conveyance system. And I guess where this leads me is, and here's what I think my colleagues and I are all focused on, which is we don't want, we fear that the amount of capacity uh of our pipes to handle stormwater runoff is becoming strained and is become, going to become even more strained. We are concerned that, yes, it's a very nice thing. And of course, you know, Department of Transportation has a responsibility for improving and increasing the size of stormwater management around the county, but let's just presume that they are overwhelmed with a request for upgrades and, you know, who knows where our system sits in the queue.
Right.
So, so I think the concern we'd have is that um, especially if it's just the issue of sizing that we could still have, we could actually find ourselves with a reduced amount of capacity to handle stormwater runoff in our pipes downstream of this. Maybe detention is something that really helps if they can really hold back and you might be able to, by the way, I'm thinking about this, answer a question. How many hours can detention hold back as a practical matter? How much difference does it make? But you can understand where we're concerned is that we could end up with a project that, that has ESD, but still ends up using additional capacity in our stormwater system. And we end up with worse floods elsewhere in town because of the additional water that comes off of, of course.
That's certainly a possibility. You're right there. I'm sure DOT is overwhelmed with requirements to upgrade systems. Our system in the county is, is quite old. Uh, you, you saw that earlier, we looked at some of these systems, a fifteen C M P. They don't use C M P anymore because it doesn't have the lifespan of concrete and they haven't used C M P for a long time. That's an older system.
What does C M P stand for?
Oh, corrugated metal pipe. Ah, yeah, yeah. They used to use metal pipe a lot. Um, but you know, they knew what the life expectancy was and when the life expectancies began to show themselves, they said, hey, maybe this wasn't such a great idea to use this corrugated metal pipe. Let's go strictly with concrete that has a much longer lifespan. So there are some older pipes in the county that are metal pipes and they probably do need to be upgraded and upsized. Uh, that's going to be a constant problem, especially with changing of uh climate and uh changing of rainfall uh patterns. Uh, everybody's really suffering to look at that kind of stuff to see how they're going to manage to keep up with those, those changing uh inputs like that.
Talk us about detention. How long, uh, uh, I, I keep on thinking of being, uh, having to stay after school for half an hour, but what, what's the what, what, what are we talking about here in detention in terms of really, really stretching out the, the water flow that can come into, into our pipes?
It depends on how big an area you're trying to detain the water from. It can take as long as it needs to take. The target is the release rate. Can't have, okay, let's just say, uh, the system can handle, uh, we, we, we talk about cubic feet per second, CFS. Let's say that the system can handle an additional five CFS. Then we size an orifice based on the amount of storage that water has gravity and pushes down to that orifice. So the more water you have, the more it tries to push through that hole and the faster it goes. So you calculate that stuff. So that the highest elevation doesn't increase that flow more than five CFS. So only five CFS comes out the hole at a maximum. So whatever it takes to drain that, it takes to drain it out. Usually it's, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
So that then dictates the size of the holding tank you need.
Yes, it does.
Uh, uh, and then so that's a function of the area that, that's going, that's the area that is being drained that goes into, into that tank and the orifice size, we put those calculations together, you can know how much, how long, how big that tank has to be.
Correct.
Are those, are these just large steel tanks sitting underground?
They are large. Typically, they're large metal pipes. Nowadays, we can use HDPE, which is high density polyethylene pipes uh, for that containment as well. They have to be at least four feet in diameter because there are inspection requirements that require people to be able to get in and out of them safely. So four feet diameter at least. Sometimes they're, you know, six, seven feet in diameter. But in the most cases, they're forty-eight or, or maybe sixty inches in diameter. There's a whole series of runs of them, several of them side by side with manholes on the ends. And they are, they are underground. And at the end of it all, there's a big concrete box with a weir in the middle of it, a big concrete weir with a hole in the bottom. It holds that water back so that it can't go anywhere except out that small hole. And that's what meters that water out.
I've, I've seen that on the purple line. Actually, I've seen one of those.
Okay.
So here's the question, and we can, you understand our concern, right? We want obviously to push ourselves into the deliberation. Now, we aren't pushing ourselves. We, we have, the developer is fine and the county's fine with our having a engineer join the process of reviewing the plan. So that, that, that part is set. But the real question is, do we have to be worried that the developer can meet the standards required by the county, by the state? But we would find that that still ends up using additional capacity in our stormwater system and hence there's additional risk downstream arising from this.
That is possible. I'll tell you, that's possible. Uh, you may want to try to have a conversation with someone from Department of Transportation. I would suggest maybe Dan Sheridan over there. He's a division chief for the Department of Transportation.
Dan Sheridan?
Sheridan, S H E R I D A N.
Okay.
Daniel. And uh, he works with this issue all the time. That is his job. He keeps track of the size of storm drain systems and where they're failing and assigning CIP money to do projects and fix those things. And he, he could give you a lot more background on what their policies are. Uh, when they look at the sizing, they ignore the ESD as well. They don't, they don't like to count on it because it's not something that they feel comfortable with. They'd rather be more conservative. Because they're looking at flow in the public storm, in, in the public right of way. And uh, they want to make sure they're as careful as they can be. But yeah, they, they're the ones that set those policies and do those, those upgrades.
And, and we, we've, we've dealt with Dan. Dan is the one we're, we're working with, with respect to a number of our storm drain issues.
Oh, good. Okay. So you know him.
Are we in touch with him about Coquelin Run? Tom?
Uh, Dave.
Yeah, we've been in touch with uh this creek person who works under him, Dan does specifically storm drains. Um, so he doesn't necessarily do stream restoration or stream stabilization. Um, so we've not been in touch with Dan specifically about that.
We've been in touch with him mainly about um storm drain repairs and capacity studies and analyses that the county has said they're going to be uh undertaking uh soon, specifically also about the Thorn Apple Somme. Um, all of the capacity related issues that we've been dealing with with respect to the county storm drain system in the town.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Mark? If not, Mark will let you go. Perhaps the rest of us could stay on the phone for just a moment.
Okay, sure. If you guys have any more questions, if I can confuse you anymore, let me know. I'm happy to attend any, any more meetings you'd need to have. If there are specific things you want me to talk about, happy to do so.
I'll, 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 a whole series of puns come to mind. I'm not sure I can hold my head above water, having had this seminar.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm probably not the most articulate spokesperson for DPS, but I try, but I
No, no, you've been very helpful and I've, I've learned, uh, learned a lot and, and I think my colleagues have too. It's, it's a as we find out, as we work on these things, all of us laypeople, every one of them has a whole silo of detailed knowledge and information and none of it's easy and, but you've been very helpful actually, and I really appreciate the candor of your comments. So that's, it's great.
You've got my email. Uh, let me know and thank you very much. I'll talk to you guys again, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, thoughts? What do we say?
I, I, I think we're in good hands down to three manholes. And then, and then we got a problem.
I mean, I, I don't know what else to say other than M D requires the ESD to the MEP is determined by DPS and DOT.
What?
You know what's scary is I actually understood you.
That is scary.
Now, I, I think he raised an issue that um we had not foreseen because at least, you know, for me, I thought we were, you know, we got the briefing so that we could determine whether um, because I think we kind of know that our current storm water management ordinances would not apply to this development. Um, and you know, my concern was, was this going to present any additional issues for the, you know, the nearby residents? But now uh, it kind of looks like the town is holding the bag in terms of, you know, this possibly creating more issue, you know, downstream direction Coquelin Run where we know we're exposed. Um, so I, you know, I, I guess, this is a Dave question. Um, if they were to increase the size of the pipes on the site, and actually, um, I don't think you were, I don't know if you were at the walk-in or, um, Dave, but um, Grant did mention that they were going to do something with that pipe that leads through Meadow. Um, if they were to increase the size of the pipes and, you know, down three more manhole covers direction, you know, Thorn Apple, what difference would that make, you know, at the other end of our water system?
Yeah, I mean, it adds a little bit more capacity into the system, probably not a substantial amount. I mean, the storm drains function very well ninety-eight percent of the time. So probably most of the time there won't be a substantial impact, but you know, you get these heavy storms where the system is currently overwhelmed, you know, it probably backs those pipes, even the upsized pipes up where then you start looking at safe conveyance. So, you know, make sure that water that doesn't enter into the storm drain system, you know, flows safely into streets and not into basements. And then eventually it works its way to an inlet that has capacity or, you know, out to Coquelin Run, you know, as it meanders its way by gravity over land. Um, so you know, at some point, the storm drain system isn't a viable solution. And then you look at something called safe conveyance where it's okay, when the storm drains become overwhelmed, put designs in place to make sure that flooding doesn't impact property.
Right. And that's, that's our concern as a municipality, whereas it seems like the state really only cares about streets. And the extent that this flooding would impact your ability to move through a street.
Yeah, and like I said, that's sort of where safe conveyance comes in. You know, typically you have streets that have gutters that are six inches high and so water, you know, that is on streets, stays on streets and doesn't, you know, going down driveways or entering the basements or, you know, wash away, you know, do damage to private property. Um, but you know, it's, I mean, it's a problem everywhere and it's not unique here and like they said, there's no storm drain system that can account for every storm that, that an area can experience.
Well, I, I guess though, you know, enlarging the system three manhole covers, that's actually just another form of detention, right? Because if at that point, then the pipe shrinks down in size, that, that becomes the, the orifice of defines how much water in that enlarged section of the pipe can actually flow through. So yeah, there's a little bit of a, he's calling it something very different, but actually it's conceptually just still
No, it, it, it's not because the manholes provide the outlet for the pressure. So what happens is it's not, it's not a retention. Those, the stormwater system isn't retention. It'll pop those, it'll pop.
It'll pop the manhole, you're right. Thank you. Right. I got it.
But the, uh, the other thing is that I, I think, you know, what, what we're doing is the, if, if those, the storm drains underground aren't sufficient, our streets become the stormwater management system of the town. And as they have in those, in the, you know, last summer. And I was, I was really surprised at that last one, how little damage there was to this, any street infrastructure because of that, because of the extra flow. So, I mean, I, unless we're, unless, I, I, I'm, I'm not, it's not, to me, it's not an emergency situation. Because if, if we're not getting, if we're not, you know, if we get one of those every, let's say, once a year and the, the streets handled the, the runoff as well as they did, and it's not affecting private residents. Uh, you know, basements are in their garages and stuff. It's, it's, it's not as critical to me that the timing of, you know, if they have to, if they have to redo the storm system, DOT says, okay, and we'll put it in the capital improvements projects, but it's two years away. That's probably okay. It, it doesn't, doesn't sound like, it doesn't seem to me to be that emergent a situation. That's just because what I said before is true. It, it sounds to me like the, for this property, the county's stormwater management folks are going to protect us down to that three-manhole length. And then we're going to have to work with the state DOT to figure out how to expand the system if it's needed.
How, how frequent, how long, uh, what is the gap between manholes? Uh, Dave, do you have some idea?
Oh, it varies. Um, and I guess in this case, you know, I guess there are two separate pipes that they might be upsizing. So, I mean, it would probably be from seven thousand Meadows to sort of where, where that current pipe comes out, it's probably just up through the end of Thorn Apple, I would think. And then probably two manholes on Thorn Apple and then one on Meadow coming off of Thorn Apple side. So it's not, not a large area.
Uh, they did say, well, just to be clear, I, I, I joined, so they, they said that they would have to do work on the collection system on the property. But the pipe that actually flows down, that actually goes down to Meadow, they would, he did not think they were going to touch. It was going to stay exactly as is. So they, at least in their conceptual thinking, they don't think that, doesn't mean there won't be more water, but, but they may have felt there's enough excess capacity in the pipe that's currently there that that pipe can handle it. In any event though, he said he did not think they needed to expand the size of that pipe going to Meadow. I, I can't speak to Thorn Apple pipe. I don't know whether they have to expand that or not.
You know, going, going to Rich's point though, um, with, if streets are like the out valve last resort, um, has Meadow ever experienced extensive flooding yet? Cause the one thing that's sticking in my mind, right, is like there are streets around town that are kind of like the hotspots, right?
Right.
But if new streets become hotspots and it's like traced to this development, it's going to create a ruckus, right? I, I don't mean to diminish those who are already hotspots, but you know, it's like river flows certain directions and you happen to be, you know, constructing near the river, you know, you're in a zone and you, you kind of bake it in to your, your life. Um, so I just, I don't know, you know, Todd, Dave, we've had a Meadow flood or elsewhere, but I just want to get, I want to put that in the mix of thoughts because I worry about, even if it's overall fine, if there is a change from the status quo, that's, that's an issue.
Dave, the, the, the pipe that goes from Meadow, that, it, it, does it then join with the pipe that's coming down Thorn Apple? And then where does it go? It goes on, it continues on Meadow and then goes on Oak and then ultimately gets down to Maple? Where, where does the pipe go?
Correct. Um, there are actually some old storm drain pipes on Meadow. Um, so there's sort of two series of trunk lines that go up Meadow. some old storm drain pipes on Meadow. Um, so there's sort of two series of trunk lines that go up Meadow. Um, I'm not sure which of those the pipe off the four inch connects to, but they go down Oak and then they connect sort of at the intersection of Oak and Leland with the larger pipes that go under Zimberman Park and then out.
There's not much grade, there's not much gradient there though, actually, is there? It's that's, that's not sharply downhill.
But that you, Dave, you just raised an interesting, I didn't know there were two pipes down Meadow. There are two pipes?
Yeah, I think one is a a stream that was under, ran along Meadow that got undergrounded. And then I think the county put in a second one more specifically to handle stormwater.
Uh, okay. So they would, the county will find that out and will could conceivably make them tie into both pipes.
I guess.
Yeah.
Let me, let me go back if I can. I could, at the end of the day, all we can really do right now is come up with some wording for a binding element, right? I mean, this has been really helpful to all of us to understand the situation a lot better, but at the moment, our immediate task is to come up with wording and I can't think of anything else other than what in fact we had in there. Um, uh, before we just put in the single word pending, which is basically, we want a system that does not reduce the net uh, capacity of 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 our system. In other words, we're saying that you know, we, we, we're encouraging uh E S D to the maximum extent practical and 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 I hope that really does make a difference. Um, and uh, also put in detention. Uh, but uh, we don't really want them to take up additional capacity on the system. Because we need it. Uh, now, I don't know where all that will come out at the end, but it seems to me that's a straightforward ask that we can put into the binding element and and uh is in fact a standard that we did not hear him discuss today. I mean, clearly the contemplation is you can put in more water, have more water conveyed off the site than currently is is being conveyed, provided you widen the pipe three manhole covers down. And the presumption is over time D O T comes in and enlarges a system to keep up with growth and of water runoff. That's, that's essentially the bargain, right? Uh, they said three, they didn't say five, they didn't say four manhole covers. So they decided that the limits of developers' responsibility is only so far. And after that, it's just part of the general infrastructure that the county should maintain. And I'm not second guessing that decision, but no one should blame the town for being wary of, you know, the result and and how long it'll take to enlarge the system. So I'm comfortable saying initially, we, we just don't want to see them, we're essentially saying that if there's additional runoff created by this project because of additional impervious service, surface, find a way to enhance the recharge with all these various measures of mitigation so that you don't put more stuff coming off.
I I think the way you said it at the beginning is probably the best way to say it is just saying, we, we don't want it to increase the net flow off of the property.
Yeah, so, we, you know, talk, work, can we work with that language?
The language is no adverse impact to adjoining residential properties and no net decrease in the carrying capacity of the stormwater management system within the town.
It sounds great.
Yeah, that's fine. It's a little trickier than that just because you start getting into size of storm where E S D is based on a one year storm and, you know, once you get past that, you get into a ten year storm or a fifty year storm, you know, there will be an increase in those cases when the pipes, so it's, there's a rate.
Do we, do we just amend it by?
It just a volume of runoff.
Do we amend it by saying a ten year storm? That seems to be kind of the, that that's what the county, that's what the county standard is, is a ten year storm. So we might as well put that in our language.
And then, the thing with the environmental site design is, I mean, it's common for county reviewers to grant waivers based on site conditions. Um, so, you know, I don't know what they're going to find when they do the geo tech, obviously in this property, there are large forest conservation easements that limit their placement of mitigation devices. Um, so once you take all of that into consideration, you know, if the county through their reviewers who are thorough and good, you know, determine that a waiver is necessary, we just need to make sure that our binding element doesn't require something that they can't do.
Yeah, I know, I'm not too concerned about those retention, but they could actually put them under the garage if they had to. So you could have a series of, you know, ten of those four foot pipes under there. It could be engineered. They don't have, it doesn't have to be in an open space.
Yeah, you have to, I'm not sure gravity wise, whether they would be able to drain to the storm drain system if they're below the garage.
How were that top of that sites?
Yeah, they they can certainly drain to the one on Meadow for sure. I can imagine that'd be a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I haven't done that.
Anyway, I, look, we're looking, we're looking for a, we're looking for a state, I'm sorry, I'm, excuse me, Rich, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Done.
Okay, um, we're looking for a stake in the ground here, guys. We're just going up to speed. We're doing the best we can. We don't have to have the ultimate best answer tomorrow. What we do need to do is to signal that we've got a credible concern that we would like to make sure is focused on as we're working through this. And that, I think, is we don't want to see a a a decline in the capacity of this town to carry water in a circumstance where we've got increasingly severe stormwater events. But I don't think that's a crazy thought. Um, so if we can get that in writing, then we'll kick off a process, you know, it's, that's what it'll be. We're, God knows, we're all come out.
So right now I have encouraged E S D to the M E P, no adverse impact to adjoining residential properties and no net decrease in the carrying capacity of the stormwater management system within the town for a ten year storm event.
Right, I think that captures it. Yeah, that's good. All right, Dan, you've been very quiet, which is, I I I wanted to make sure you had a chance to say something if you wish to.
Uh, thanks, yeah. I was just letting the working session proceed.
Okay.
Um, I, I was glad to hear Barney, you mentioned that when we did the walk in our we seemed to get an assurance and walked away feeling like, oh, wow, maybe there's going to be a net decrease.
Yeah.
On runoff and the gentleman tonight gave us a very different impression.
I think that's right. I think I got, what's really going to matter here is, I think we've agreed on the wording to go into the binding element and what, and and Todd, we absolutely have to have our engineer, um, you know, present at all these discussions and report back on a regular basis. Because this is going to be a pretty big issue.
Yeah.
The other, the other peanut gallery comment I made, I didn't, you, I don't know if you are the only one who saw that, but
I am, yeah.
I wasn't going to chime in and it's, again, it's more of a strategic thing that a ten year event today is not a ten year event ten years from now.
Right.
You know, to, a ten year event today is, is five inches in twenty four hours, ten years from now. But anyway, that's a whole
Uh, I I understand where you're heading on that, you know.
Yeah.
It could be one year, ten year, five years from now.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, folks, I I that's all I wanted to get done, but I think we've come to a conclusion with wording we can support. And uh, let's get on with it, but thank you all very much. I think this is a useful session.
Very.
Played a lot.
Yeah, hey, thanks. Uh, Barney, take a look at your email from Bob Dalrymple as well. We can talk.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll get right back to you. All right. Thank you all very much.
Great, thanks all. Bye bye.
Take care. Bye.